Okay, so, uh, welcome everybody. We are gonna be recording this session to get posted on the website. Uh, but we've got a pretty, uh, great slate of guests to talk to the board uh, in this work session about what is practicable to ask of developers uh, when they are building whatever it is they're building uh, from an environmental standpoint. Uh, I think anybody who's been paying attention knows that the board uh, has a couple of go-tos, uh, some really easy, some really hard. And so what we're looking for tonight is uh, to educate the board, but also the public and have this be a tool that the developers can use uh, to learn a little bit about what it means in 2023 going into 2024 uh, to build sustainably. Uh, so with that, Pete, do you wanna do a little introduction and we'll kick it off?
Sure, okay. Um, my name is Pete Worth. Um, I am the Vice President of Climate Change Awareness and Action. I, I had the pleasure of uh, uh, meeting Tom a few years ago uh, when I saw your officials from New York City came and toured his building on South Salina Street. Um, I'll let Tom explain about his building and the significance of it, but I just want to share two, two facts that came across my desk this week. You know, I'm on a number of listservs, so every day I get kind of updates from around the world on climate change. So, the green, the glaciers in Greenland, there was a recent report. They, the rate of melt of the glaciers in Greenland is increased fivefold since the 1980s. You know, it's just one, it's just one sign of many that around the world in terms of how uh, climate change is impacting the environment. I mean, another factor in terms of dollars and cents is the federal government released some statistics and it used to be we would have a million, pardon me, a billion-dollar storm event once every four months. This would be like in the 1980s. Today, we have a one-billion-dollar storm event every three weeks. You know, it's just, it's another sign of how climate change is increasing in an intensity. And we really need to do everything we can to get off of fossil fuels. Um, at this point, I'm gonna hand it over to uh, Tom Goodfellow, who is the developer uh, of the Whitlock Building and a Syracuse homegrown resident, I guess.
Town of Manlyas.
Town of Manlyas.
Thanks, I'm glad we could get together and just discuss a little bit about uh, well, Pete and climate change and uh, uh, the way uh, things have been going lately. I've been a builder, real estate developer for most of my career, um, upwards of forty years. Um, I've always been concerned about utilities and especially after I moved out of my parents' house and I had to pay my first utility bill, so. I've built over seventy homes, I've developed three hundred-plus building lots, I've uh, I've done uh, well over a million square feet of commercial space. So I've been in the building business for my whole career. Recently, I say recently, ten years ago, I bought, my son and I bought the former Goldber building on Salina Street in downtown Syracuse. At that time, we didn't have a clue what we're gonna do with it, but as our plan evolved in 2018, we started renovating it. It's uh, a mixed-use building. We have twenty-six apartments. We have uh, approximately twenty thousand square feet of commercial space. It took us probably a year longer to finish it because of COVID problem. But we finished it, uh, all of the apartments were leased within uh, three days. Um, the commercial spaces all leased to a, a company that came out of the uh, Tech Garden in Syracuse called Density. And it is the first carbon-free renovation in Syracuse. I've, I've still yet to find another one that is like ours. By carbon-free, I mean we're a total electric building. In the building business, what I have learned the most is if you protect the environment of the building, meaning you don't want the wind blowing through. Use insulation properly, seal up the building. And what we have done in the building, we, we have uh, each apartment is heated by a, an air-source heat pump. We, we use a couple inches of foam on the outside of the building. And our apartments, they're smaller apartments, but they're, they're affordable apartments and they're not subsidized by anyone. We were below the market in downtown Syracuse uh, because of our insulation and our heat pumps. We charge the tenants a fifty-dollar fee for heat lights, air conditioning, hot water. And that's something we, we started, you know, we just took an estimate of what we thought the apartments were gonna cost. And actually, we break even on the, the electric bill. So our tenants, both commercial and residential, pay for the building utilities because it's so efficient. We're running less than forty cents a square foot for uh, energy costs. Uh, we monitor a few of the apartments with a sense meter, so I know exactly how um, how much electricity they're using. Uh, I know the town is uh, is looking for some affordable housing, but you gotta remember affordable housing, you can have a lower rent. But if the utility cost on an apartment, you know, runs double or it's not an affordable apartment after a while. So, right now, we're in the planning stages of adding twenty-eight more apartments to our building. It was built, the building was built in nineteen twenty-three on the Salina side, on the um, Clinton Street side of the building. It was built in the sixties. So, our footers and foundation can support another two floors, so we're, we're in the planning stage of adding two more. We've been approved for solar on the building. If we put solar on the building with our existing twenty-six apartments, we'll be net zero, which is unheard of for a building this size. A few weeks ago, Pete and uh, his intern Stella and I went to um, Ithaca and we viewed another electric building. It was very interesting. It can be done. What um, I've talked to Pete and John about is having some sort of a a, I call it a suggestion meeting, so when you have a builder or a developer comes and says, I wanna build three hundred apartments. I'd like to talk to them or have a committee because I, I'm familiar with all the building, how to build and how to do it. But I'm also familiar with NYSERDA, you know, the incentives they have, National Grid and their incentives. And it, I mean, I'm, it's just a volunteer thing, but I, if we can just offer, you know, what, what I've learned, what we know, so we can get some builders that will come in and build an affordable either apartment, townhouse, or home. And it's not that difficult. Years ago, I went to Canada when I, I built my own house. I've built several for myself, but I built one about twenty-two years ago. And I went to Canada for a builder show because I knew they knew how to insulate a house, how to heat it. And, you know, I brought back some, some wonderful stuff that I used and that house was very efficient, so. I'm not looking to argue with anybody, but I can say it can be done. It's not hard. It's not rocket science by any means.
Just to, to fill in, um, uh, the utility bill for the apartments, it's fifty dollars a month.
Less than, I mean, we charge fifty, but it's costing about forty-eight. I was just, I was just checking.
I'll make you two bucks over the apartment.
I mean, and it wasn't intended that way. It was just intended to, you know, recover some of the costs. And we use a conventional electric hot water heater. That's included in that, so.
I mean, this is for, this is for the hot water, for the cooking and for heating and cooling, fifty dollars a month.
And that, that, our overall electric cost also includes a hydraulic elevator. And that's a big order going up and down, so.
And I think, um, you know, so much of where our focus has been is where are you getting the energy from, where are you getting the heat from? And I think it was the general idea of um, changing how new development, where it's sealed. And then a heat pump is great, you know, and I think a lot of what we hear about the cost of heat pumps uh, comes from retrofitting an existing house that isn't built to that, that, that level of being sealed off. Um, that makes it so that, you know, we, you know, we can talk about what a portable heat pump looks like and we talk with developers who've been in the industry, if they don't know how they, how they become effective, well then obviously it's gonna seem, you know, wasteful for them to, to, to go after that, so I think you know, in talking uh, with Tom and Pete and trying to understand, you know, when a developer comes here and we say we want you to build sustainably. The goal has always been, well, what do we need? You know, again, I think, you know, we, we've probably thrown out geothermal more often than not. Understanding that that's kind of a pie in the sky thing for a lot of the developments we're looking at. But when we look at the two PUDs that are, you know, currently in process right now, one just approved and one to be approved at some future meeting. You know, being able to intelligently speak and say, these are the standards. Uh, I know this uh, board looked pretty fleet at the Stretch Code, uh, New York State Stretch Code. Uh, and we were met with a lot of resistance from developers and community, uh, which kind of said, okay, rather than trying to adopt higher and stricter standards, how can we start working to incentivize the goals that we have now to be trying in the comprehensive plan? How can we incentivize developers to do that? So as we look at the PUD process, that becomes a really great opportunity for us to say, you know, here's the code, but here's what we could build to, which would, you know, make us more incentivized to offer more flexibility on the site, uh, more density, all the different things that we're already looking at. Um, and, you know, I, I think, you know, not only this, this initial conversation, but as we look forward to developing a planning committee that wraps around the development process, uh, you know, for developers um, that are working with the Town of Manlyas, the opportunity early on to start changing minds and educating the developers themselves, rather than getting to the planning board stage and, you know, that's not where we have those conversations. You know, ideally, we're having this conversation before it's properly zoned or there's a PUD in place. Um, and that's where, um, you know, I think some of this insight is helpful for us now to go forward and really hold them to that standard if they are looking for something. Um, and so, uh, is there anything else you'd like to add about the overall construction or um?
I have a couple of questions.
Oh, go for it, yeah.
So, one, if you were talking about new construction, but in terms of the retrofit, I think it's gas many days a building was a nineteen twenties and a nineteen sixties because the construction in those two areas was significantly different. Um, and I would assume that you had a better time with the older part than you were prior, but maybe not.
No, well, basically, it was a gut of the building, so all we had were four walls. So, it, from that, from the wall, and it was all new construction, so, no, not really, but um, it, it was a challenge. And I didn't say this before, but we took no um, energy incentives. We didn't wanna, I was worried about the red tape, you know, that would be, that would hold us up. So I, I got no incentives from NYSERDA or anybody for the um, energy efficiency of the building. I took two grants, one is a Main Street grant that most developers get in downtown. Um, that was to do the facade of the building, because the facade was shot. Um, and then we got a fifty percent matching grant from National Grid for the removal of the asbestos in the building. It was contaminated.
Oh, I'm sure.
I mean, we had a five-hundred-thousand-dollar bill for asbestos removal, but we fortunately got a grant from National Grid, they paid for half of that under their brownfield program. But other than that, it's been, it's a successful building now.
Just, I could just add to Tom's, uh, the building that we visited at Ithaca, the ironworks, that's, that was new construction, that was a hundred-and-twenty-unit building. Same thing, wool-electric. And Tatum Engineering, uh, which is an Ithaca-based firm, um, you know, they did a presentation afterwards in a Q and A. And the cost differential, after all the, before incentives, I think it was three percent. After, after the incentives, I think it was point six, point six percent, or less than, less than one percent. Um, so for, for, for new construction with the incentives that are out there, you know, the difference between uh, carbon-free building and um, you know, a building that's gonna use traditional carbon-based fuels, point six percent.
So the other question I had was to do with the stretch code. One of the things that the stretch code emphasized was air, air exchange. And the more you seal a building for insulation and, you know, it's eighteen tubes of top for every unit, the, the more there could be an issue with air exchange. So did you address that specifically?
We have, um, three very large ERVs, energy recovery ventilators. And basically, what it does, it takes fresh air in and somehow it crosses it through the filters. They, the air doesn't touch, but it transfer the heat going out to the air coming in and vice versa, it's cool. And they work. That's included in our energy, uh, our cost of the building, so.
So that would be another thing, you know, I think people tend to go for the insulation thing, oh, we need eighteen inches of insulation all around my house, but then they don't think about the air exchange.
Right, right. I mean, in my house, Sarah, I got my, I have a nineteen sixties vintage house, split-level, you know, Cameron Lane in Fayetteville. And um, I got my house so, it's sort of counterintuitive, you get your house so tight, you need to bring fresh air. But I, I had an ERV installed. I mean, one of the things it also does, um, air quality. You know, I, I mean, I have allergies. When I say I have allergy, I, I ended up getting sinus surgery because after ten years of allergies, they can cause me serious problems. Um, air quality is better within ERV because they have filters in. And, you know, it's, it's what they call conditioned air. And so, mine is a retrofit situation. I, I also added ASOS heat pump added to my gas furnace system, so I have a hybrid heating system in my house.
It's, like I said, it's controlling the environment in the house, and we've done that. Uh, one thing I wanna say, um, probably thirty days from now, I can answer the retrofit on a, a house. My wife and I sold our house, our big house, because the kids are gone, and we moved down to Erie Village, has a gas furnace. Um, I already got rid of the, the gas uh, hot water heater. And I'm gonna retrofit it with a heat pump, so I can answer, I know the questions asked, the, the installers and what to do on it. I, I can answer that question, how much it would cost for a two-thousand-square, square-foot retrofit. So, other than thirty days, I can answer that.
That would be interesting to see, because, you know, that's gonna be a major topic.
Right.
But how much of the housing is getting to that point where, you know, it needs to be renovated and improved upon? So, you know, the more we can provide residents to educate them, but also incentivize them, I think would be, would be great, because I know.
John, would you, I have to um, board my flight in just a minute, would you mind if I just told everyone where I'm going? Sorry to interrupt, I was trying to be patient, but uh, they're boarding my group now. Um, so, I'm currently at the Hancock Airport and I'm heading to Washington DC uh, for the elected officials to protect New York, um, and the elected officials to protect America's summit. Uh, so tomorrow, we'll be at the Department of Energy. Um, and we have meetings all day with representatives of the DOE and other elected officials from around the country. Um, and we're gonna be learning all about the Inflation Reduction Act, um, and other legislation uh, to uh, promote climate action in communities across the country. And uh, as many of you know, the Inflation Reduction Act includes quite a bit of money um, for homeowners and for businesses. So as it's rolled out, I'm hoping to learn more about the funding that's available that we can bring back to the Town of Manlyas. So could very well find out about some uh, money available for infrastructure and housing development, so stay tuned.
Thank you.
I'm gonna jump off now, but I'm gonna try to get back on once I'm on the plane. Bye, everybody.
Yeah, yeah. One other thing in terms of electrical, um, electricity tends to not have the spikes that you think of your natural gas bill, at times the price of natural gas fluctuates much, much more. With electrical rates tend to be fairly stable. So it's also a predictable cost if you're, you know, a resident and you're trying to do long-term planning for your budget, you know, you could pretty much count on what your heating bill or cooling bill will be.
Well, especially if we've been looking at, you know, we have the solar on the landfill that's gonna be uh, uh, being available to residents soon, and then we're looking at community choice aggregation. So all these other ways that you flatten out that as much as possible, get a little more predictability. I think, I think, uh, you know, Tom, to your point before, you know, an affordable apartment is great, but if your utility bill is unaffordable, it's kind of, it's a moot point. I think that's something that I haven't ever considered. You know, like, what actually goes into the cost of what we call affordable housing, workforce housing, so. Uh, so with that, I know, well, we have Chris St- Strohle.
Strile.
Strile, sorry. Uh, you're from Comfort Solutions?
Sustainable Comfort.
Sustainable Comfort, who is an expert, uh, so why don't you introduce yourself a little bit?
Yeah, so, um, as John mentioned, my name is Chris Strile with Sustainable Comfort and we are an energy consulting firm uh, here, here, excuse me, here in Syracuse. Um, primarily for affordable housing and the affordable part is um, kind of a we work with HCR and developers across New York State. Um, we actually just finished up a nine percent funding round. Uh, there is a framework um, to sustainability with HCR, so they, they have launched the Sustainability Design Guidelines. So if you're gonna build affordable housing in New York State, um, I think for the past two years, it was mandated to be all-electric. With NYSERDA and other entities, um, there's been some interesting research going on. Really affordable housing in New York State is leading kind of the front lines on uh, low-carbon, um, and in kind of decarbonizing our, our housing. Um, and that goes with operating costs, as we've been talking about. Um, also embodied carbon with materials, um, and how to, uh, what type of materials that you build with. And that's anything from, you know, raw, like glavel, which is a foamed glass that can insulate underneath your slab instead of the plastic foam, to reduced um, embodied carbon in your concrete. Uh, and I believe the state mandated that there's um, a, there's a, there's an additive to reduce that um, to wood fiber insulations and, and, and all that, but so, I mean, for, for the IRA, um, there are tax credits currently, and it's uh, it's like a thousand dollars per home or up to five thousand dollars per home. Um, if you build to Department of Energy's or energy-ready homes, the thousand dollars is energy star. Um, with multifamily, I believe it's five hundred and a thousand. Um, and the, the two programs, the distinction is just the Department of Energy is a little bit higher performance targets. And this, when we talk about performance, it's all energy modeling, um, not to get too, you know, too complex, but, and it, you know, um, to hit those marks, but that is, that is how you hit your uh, your IRA tax credits.
So talk about the, the embodied carbon stuff, like, I just think of a house, you know, being made out of bricks and wood and stuff, but they not.
Not really, continuous insulation, you know, foam, plastic wrapped around the entire house is very common. Um, so, um, kind of a breakthrough at a NESSI conference in, in Boston. It was, there was a breakthrough that passive house is the most efficient um, way to build a, a building. Um, it's the most aggressive um, energy standard in the world right now. And the, they found that it takes as much carbon, the offset is not as much because the operating carbon is very low from a code-built home, but you put so much plastic into the home that it really offsets the benefit. So then, the, um, really the goal was to incorporate more low-embodied carbon materials instead of wrap it with foam. So there is like wood fiber continuous insulation, there's rock wool, which is like a spun rock. Um, and other materials like the foam glass I was mentioning to uh, to drive down the, the embodied carbon. So as much as you hear operational carbon with the all-electric buildings, a really big thing coming up is the embodied carbon.
It's like styrofoam, it's way back then.
Yeah, and the blowing agents and spray foam, um, and, and again, there was a mandate to lower that. Um, the HFCs in, in blowing agents is bad, so they're trying to curb that. There's like better foams um, than, than others. Uh, and, and education to the builders and the homeowners to, you know, try to, if you're gonna use foam, try to use your, try to use the lower embodied carbon foam.
I'd be interested if, after this, you could send us like a website or whatever, write down information. Because I, I think a lot of homeowners might be just building an addition at home, not even think about this kind of thing.
Yeah.
And what I think that, too, is like, it's this issue where if developers aren't educated yet, like, we know we have a populace that would want these things, but if it's not on offer, then it's, it's not free. Um, and I think that's where a lot of, a lot of this conversation, and I love that we have to come in operational and construction standpoint, kind of two facets to, you know, sustainable housing, which again, like, I will admit, prior to you speaking, I had no idea that we thought about how much carbon went into the house. But I think, um, you know, this is a good kind of introduction to folks to say, okay, well, when the board says they wanna see sustainable development, you know, this is a, this is a useful uh, conversation to watch, to learn. Uh, and then to know if we have resources within the community. Uh, I mean, right within our community, but also in, in the larger, uh, you know, Anadagian County and Syracuse area. You know, I think, uh, and I don't know if Peyton's still listening, uh, but it sounds like really, we've got a lot of back and forth and education to do internally. And then we should be looking to all of our partners in the area to, you know, like, bring in the home builders and saying, would you guys wanna have, whether it's a meeting or a seminar or something, where these exchange of ideas and networking can happen. Um, you know, because it's, for us, it's easy to get advocates, you know, on one side of the table. If we can start bringing in the developers that, that are interested in learning, um, you know, I'm not gonna, and that's where I think another important point is, what we don't wanna do is have stricter standards, to have stricter standards. What we wanna do is until, you know, codes, you know, the Stretch Code or whatever else comes down from the state, we wanna be incentivizing folks here because that's helpful. You know, if we can say, if you meet this, you're gonna get extra density, or you're gonna get this allowance, or you're gonna get this reduction in the cost. You know, that's really how we drive this. Um, you know, like, we're talking, you know, you're talking about, you know, point six percent more to build it. You know, you're talking about uh, different funding out there to build lower-carbon houses. Uh, and then if the town can play a part in those incentives, uh, you know, we can build a picture where, you know, if you're building in the Town of Manlyas, it's actually cost, it costs neutral to do the right thing. Um, and maybe even cheaper in some way.
John, uh, Tom has to leave shortly. Are there more questions for Tom? Because I'd like to also maybe address some of the questions, but if you have questions directly for Tom, now would be a good time to ask him.
I don't really, I just, I, I, I thank you again for the tour. We did a tour of the Whitlock Building last year and it was remarkable. I was struck by, number one, the low uh, cost of the apartments that went up for rent and where we, you know, rented that and it was three days.
Three days.
And utility costs, and I guess for me, I'm just, it bears repeating and I'm marveling at that, you know, if it truly is really the energy cost savings that's allowing you to offer these affordable units in a market that could demand twice that. And so those, um, I say, let's do more of that.
Is it helpful, Tom? Could you share your, the rents for the?
Our rents, they run from nine hundred and fifty to fifteen hundred dollars. But fifteen hundred dollars uh, apartments are one, two-story, one-bedroom, twelve-hundred-square-foot apartment.
They're beautiful.
And they're going for, uh, an apartment that size is twenty-four hundred dollars. We're, one problem when you rent twenty-six apartments in three days is all of the leases come up. So my son has been going crazy, but out of the twenty-six we leased, we've only lost four people. He has a waiting list of thirty-five people right now. He showed one of them yesterday and there were six people looking at it. And they're out of the six, five, and we're ready to put the deposit, but I stay out of that. We're not raising the rents. We haven't raised them in a year. We're, we're trying to keep steady. We can pay the bills, make a little bit of money, um, and move on. That's why we're trying to build twenty-six more apartments. And if we can demonstrate what's possible.
Yes, yeah. One, too, I think, too, with uh, using an old site, essentially an old site, right, an old building. Uh, but then also, too, understanding the phasing of it, you know, that's something that I feel like would be attractive, especially when we talk about infill development. You know, well, if you're adding two stories, maybe those two stories are built to these higher standards. And then over time, you remediate the rest of the building to get it to that standard. You know, especially too, remediation, I think, gets easier as the technology gets better.
The two stories are gonna be built out of wood, so, um, then I can transfer that into a townhouse. You know, what, I can build a townhouse slab on grade, so, uh, it's, it's been interesting, it's been a lot of fun. All I'm doing is, I'd like to have a, a suggestion committee in the town. Get somebody to come here. I live in the town, I've been here a long time. Um, and if I come back next time, I'll report it on the heat pump in my. And if I come back next time, I'll report it on the heat pump in my.
That's great. Thank you so much.
It's. I'm thinking, what it sounds like, this, this would be a good opportunity to have a few folks from Sustainable Manlius. To, you know, put together, you know, what does that look like? Because I think Sustainable Manlius, again, we have residents here. That's what Sustainable Manlius is. And as we think about moving forward, you know, whether it's, you know, at our monthly planning committee meetings. Or if it's quarterly, when we can bring developers to the table and say, you're the experts, ask all your questions. And really, I mean, that's so much of the goal, because if we can get them educated and if every other piece is making it effective cost-wise. We might not even have to do anything. We can just ask that those are met, you know, in new construction. So.
Just to start you real quick, I'm not an expert. I know a little bit about a lot of things, a lot about nothing. I ask the right questions. And I, I can tell you that I've done it. That's, that doesn't make me an expert. I can tell you that my utility bills are low. Wherever I've lived, because I've done some of the right things. So, thank you very much.
Does anyone in the room have an opinion on the, on the stretch code?
Was that directed to Tom?
Well, it's not directed to the councilor, cause I could talk to them offline, but I just wondered if. If Chris or Tom has any knowledge or recommendations on that.
No, I don't. I don't. There are some things in it that are good, some things that, you know, a lot of builders will question. But I go back to controlling the environment the best you can.
Yeah.
Thank you. I'll be in touch.
I mean, so I think one of the biggest changes in there is it's required that you have an ERV or an HRV. And that. That just seems to be a cost add for, for builders and developers. And so they tend to push back on that. I may be guiding them with cost-effective, you know, ways to, to, cause. Really, a standard ERV four-pipe system, you know, over a thousand dollars. It can be different efficiencies. I mean, you know, there is Panasonic does make a, like more of a three, four hundred dollar one. Lower flows, but you know, it's got the filter in there and the core and it, it, it solves the, the problem. But this stretch code does introduce, you know, fresh air requirement. And, and yeah, that's just a little more costly than.
Yeah, I feel like everything we learned about it, it was like really good ideals. And maybe a little less good on the implementation side.
Yeah. And you can sell the stuff with comfort. And you could say that it's gonna be a more comfortable, you know, building instead of the energy efficiency side.
One, one of the things that Tom did not mention also was being downtown, you have a lot of urban noise, ambulances, fire. You don't hear a thing in his building, because the, the windows on one side of the building are triple-pane. Build, it's very, very quiet in all the apartments. You know, those are quality of life things, how much people are willing to pay for them. Same thing with air quality. I mean, very few people think of air quality. I do.
We did talk with a few of the builders from the Home Builders Association after the more disastrous stretch code call. And there was some appetite to, you know, consider working together to basically show people, this is what a model sustainable home looks like. Here are the good things, here are the costs. But understanding that this is a market where you can imagine that that would be something that goes into consideration. You know, not outside of the affordable options that you, you know, when density makes it a lot, a lot easier. As we're looking at new builds and in subdivisions, you know, we could be having builders build to that standard. Even in, you know, the five, six hundred thousand dollar homes, because again, we have a different housing market where that is one of the things.
Affording affordable utilities, consistent utilities, air quality. You know, those things I think have value for some people.
Yeah.
You know, like Tom said, they rented all those apartments in three days.
Yeah.
And there's a waiting list of thirty-five.
Well, I know too, when we did the climate, the greenhouse gas study for, as part of the Climate Action Plan. You know, it was different because, you know, I mean, if everybody could stop using gas cars, I mean, we would solve the problem pretty much overnight. But then there is a significant amount that we don't think about from where we live, how we use power. And I think this is maybe starting to show us, you know, as far as the comprehensive plan goals, what can be done to start meeting. You know, reductions in greenhouse gases that, you know, and not many people feel that they have. The ability to make those decisions for themselves, because they're not building their house, they're not building their addition. They're hiring somebody to come in and fix their furnace and these things. And that's where I think, again, if the town can serve that role of educating local developers. And the goal, you know, folks that are working on utilities, to say, these are real options that can be, you know, can be affordable. Again, that, I think that helps us meet our goals long-term. So, do they have any other questions?
Just wondering if any people who decided to come out this evening, if you have any questions or additions you have. Let us ask anything out.
Actually, I, I know Tom quite well. I've been to the facility, many of the shelters have as well. I've seen it there as well, a couple of houses. It's a remarkable story here, with the things that are amazing. The other example, one should take a look at, and I think that, listen, I'd ask you, if you're familiar with the Syracuse Land Bank Development, this is a south side of Syracuse. Cause they did a whole bunch of things where they brought in a variety of heat pumps and renovated really dilapidated homes that were not happy. The problem is they had to put so much money into it. Their goal was actually to sell them to people. More income community, actually had to find special financing to accomplish that, but still creates issues that goes longer. And I look at it because I have to be a trustee in a village or family, and so I'm looking at more renovations than I might have about new housing. Because they're really sort of stuck there. And you, but you folks have as many renovations as I do, because you have like more housing units out there. And also other kinds of commercial property that fit there too. So I'm saying this is actually a really good way to keep our, our heads on the swivel. Keep looking around what's going on, as long as you're new construction. But that's gonna be a real forward thing in the town. Particularly with what's going on with our economic development in the area. There's no question about it. So. That is, you know, why I'm looking at, and that's why I came here, because I wanted to see Tom again, or see what was going on. Because to me, this is a very important process. I proposed stretch codes to our village at one point and had it on the table. And it just drawn out unbelievable response from the builders. That was so negative, it was unreal. And I know you probably have experienced similar types of things. But it's the kind of thing that we have to figure out how to do an education for those folks. And that's exactly what you're talking about as well, how we do it.
Well, especially too, as we, like talking about the village, you know, as we look at accessory dwelling units, as we look at, at single-family homes being redeveloped into duplexes and triplexes. Like, these are real opportunities where if you're gonna be doing that amount of work anyway, you know, and maybe that's part of some of the more. Dense housing options that we're looking at is those could be requirements, because you're getting that density. So when you do that retrofit, you know, if we educate people that are doing the retrofits, that is a great way to incentivize it. And it kind of solves two problems at once. We're getting denser housing and we're retrofitting the existing properties to be more sustainable.
And I, and I do think that with the dense housing, it's really important thing for everybody there. They do believe that Governor Volcker will impact proposing that again in their next budget. So that rule impact happened.
Yeah.
And I was surprised that she dropped it as late as she did in her last budget. That, that actually shocked me. I mean it sincerely. Because I really believe this is an ongoing thing that's gonna happen across the board. And so we all have to basically figure out what our opportunities are. You have, you have different opportunities than I, I have, and I appreciate that.
Yeah, there certainly are incentives for heat pumps, not only hot water heat pumps, but. Heating, cooling, heat pumps. And there's also, NYSERTA has a early design support. Offering up to a hundred thousand dollars for a, a developer that is looking to build. And it just goes into research and soft costs of design upfront if they wanna build a high-performance building.
Like you mentioned before earlier, there's a lot of programs out there to be provided for developers while they're retrofitting or building new. To include these types of sustainability aspects in their properties. I mean, granted, yes, they, I do work in four walls. And so we did have ninety percent tax credit deals and Freedom Commons, that's a simple number we're working with on, to be a lead certified building. There, but outside of the tax credits, we did have outside funding in there through NYSERTA and other companies too. Through NYSERTA and other programs out there to provide. Oh, funding to help us lower the cost of developing those properties. So it is really important to provide. Need some sort of like an education factor, because in our town, developers aren't necessarily, they don't need to look for those types of funding sources. Because homeowners just wanna build their homes. They're, they're just building them. They're not looking to, it was the cheapest rate for me to get these types of things in here. Now they want these in there. And yes, the government is offering rebates and things like that for getting those types of things. But they're always going to be around those tax breaks. But these other types of programs, like you, someone mentioned National Grid, the brownstone, brownfield, excuse me, brownfield program for it. Those types of things, yes, we can offer incentives as well, saying, okay, we'll give you more denser property over here to build, project over here to build. But that's only so much to help them. We can only do that so many times too. Having, having like a listing on our website of saying, here, here's all these programs that are out there that you can apply for to help your funding of your project. Build these into your performance, you can help learn your, your budgets for your program, your development there. As well as incentivize them to add these things into their developments and their, their having the properties.
So, John, I got an email today from National Grid that, and I'll forward it to you. But if, if I got it right, it was a fifteen hundred dollar, I guess rebate or an incentive or. For, for, for ten thousand, gets a little geeky, ten thousand BTUs. So I have a three-ton heat pump. So a three-ton, a, a ton is, I think, twelve thousand BTUs of heating. So a three-ton would be like a thirty-six thousand BTU unit. And if I read this email right, which, which sound way too high, that's why I sent it to you. That'd be fifteen, that'd be like forty-five hundred dollar rebate. Because it's.
For the installation of the system?
Yeah, that's what.
I mean, yeah, I think that's.
And that was just National Grid, and I believe in the IRA. Are there also incentives or?
I'm not sure about the IRA, but, but yeah, that's an installer-based incentive. So it does go to the installer, but they should, that should drive down.
Okay, so it's right, so, so right, so that's the right, the installer would be.
Yeah. I'll send you that. I'll send an email. I just got it today.
So I'm thinking, you know, just looking at the time, I'm thinking kind of like next steps. Probably one of those would be working with Sustainable Manlius to put a group together, probably with me, Tom, and anybody else that's interested. To, at, right off the bat, we can start building a repository of programs that are out there. And technologies that are out there, vendors that are out there, that are going to simply, as a resource, serve all of the conversation we've had tonight. With developers and homeowners. And then I think from there, once that's developed, as we move into next year. Having a member of that subcommittee join our planning committee to advocate for those things. And set up future conversations. And then even, you know, further from that, would be probably reaching out to the Home Builders Association and saying. We wanna have a conversation. It doesn't have to be Town of Manlius, but we've got people that wanna be part of this conversation to educate your, your people. We think there's quite a number of builders that wanna meet these ideals. And then we can find other partners like Chuy. Shirley City of Syracuse might be interested. And maybe we could develop something where it would be a local, even if it's just, you know, quick thing and a little networking. That way we can kind of center the resources. We've found, share that with other communities. And then also bring in the builders and allow them to meet the folks that are, that are often, that know about these incentives, that are building based on these things. Cause it's, in the short term, we need a resource that is available as soon as possible. Because just knowing, like if an installer for heat pumps knows that there's this, you know, National Grid rebate available, that's huge. Cause then that's gonna be almost a direct cost savings to the, to the homeowner. Then we can educate the public to know that these programs are out there. And then moving forward, we just try to expand upon that. So, and we have anything else they'd like to add?
We, we have, we being CCAA, we have eight interns. We worked really hard to get interns this year. So we have them from ESF, Lemoine. Stella is one of our interns from Lemoine. I was gonna write an article for the newsletter. I'm in five, five from SU. So if the town needed assistance in terms of like an educational program, you know, we might be able to help.
Oh, that sounds fantastic. Yeah, so it sounds like what we'll do then, what, do you know when the next Sustainable Manlius meeting is?
It was the first Thursday.
First Thursday. So maybe, maybe what we'll do is I'll talk to Kate and then we can have a conversation. But if we could get a couple of people that could lead those interns in developing that resource. Cause that sounds like we could get a pretty quick turnaround.
They would need supervision. I mean, some of them have like social media skills, you know, writing skills. So depending on what the project is, the skill sets you needed, you might be able to provide some bodies.
That sounds great.
Maybe.
Either way, I don't think we'd have a shortage of volunteers from Sustainable Manlius that would be interested in doing something like this.
Okay.
Okay, so with that, I will call this work session to a close. We do have a normally scheduled board meeting at six-thirty. But I do wanna thank all of our speakers. I wanna thank the board for being here. I wanna thank the members of the public for being here. You know, when we think about, you know, moving on from the comprehensive plan towards implementation. I think conversations like this are, are essential, because, you know, we all have goals, we all have things we wanna do, we wanna make the world a better place. But it's, you know, this is, this is the way that we get there. This is, the board is educated, the public is educated, we built a resource just in this meeting tonight. So I do wanna thank everybody for being here. I think this was a great conversation. I know I learned a lot, and I look forward to the next one.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you. A footnote, John, so my parents' house was built in nineteen-ten in New York. These are road brick houses. So I remember as a little kid, maybe, maybe, maybe I dreamt this, but finding some coal, we had a coal bed. And all those houses were on coal. So I think we need to remind ourselves that, you know, it used to be everything in New York was coal. We've done these shifts in energy. I mean, it's hard to imagine going from, you know, natural gas to electric. But my parents' house was a coal-fired boiler with radiators. And then, you know, by the time I came along, it was natural gas. So we've done this before. We, we can do it.